I will call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christianson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Tarkin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Kableek. Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd just like to add a comment at the end of the meeting.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull the Wilmer Police Commission Minutes under the consent agenda.
Okay, under the consent agenda, uh, do we have a motion to approve, uh, with the, uh, Police Commission Minutes for April 26th?
So moved.
Second. A motion has been made in second to approve the consent agenda, uh, with the exception of the Wilmer Police Commission Minutes pulled for April 26th, Councilman Dacken. Although, I'm sorry, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. That motion carries, Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make mention that at the, uh, April 26th Police Commission meeting, that twenty-four candidates were interviewed, twenty-four candidates, between April 17th and the 19th. And then also, I want to mention that, uh, the fact that Chief Wifels informed the Commission that he had just returned from the Minnesota Chiefs Convention where he learned that beginning in August, uh, 2012, veterans' preference points goes up to ten from five at the present time. By law, the preference points can be added at any point in the testing process. Historically, the Wilmer Police Department has always added them at the end of the testing process. And I'd like to ask the chief why we add at the end of the process.
Councilman Dacken, the reason for that is, that is where it's the most beneficial to the applicant. To do it earlier in the process would not award them as many, uh, points towards the overall score. So we thought that was the most fair thing to do. It's been historically done that way, and I couldn't see any reason to change.
That's what I was thinking also, and I agree with you. Thank you very much.
Do we have a motion to, uh?
I would move that we file the minutes of the Wilmer Police Commission, uh, April 26th, 2012.
Second.
A motion has been made in second to, uh, file the minutes of the Wilmer Police Commission for April 22nd, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Uh, at this time, well, is anyone scheduled to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll move into the, uh, scheduled hearing. Uh, Holly, would you like to explain that to us? At this point, I will open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the, members of the council. For those in the audience and those watching on TV, this is our annual stormwater meeting as required by our MS four permit. The purpose of our meeting is to continue to raise awareness of the importance of good stormwater management, uh, to provide an update as to what the status of our compliance with the MS four permit is, which includes what we've done in 2011, what we are currently doing this year, and what we plan to do in the future, and also to allow the citizens and the council to comment on the city's, um, implementation procedures. I'll just review the definition of an MS four. We've been doing this for several years now, but I'd like to review it since we don't visit the MS four, but annually. The MS four is called, is the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and it is a conveyance or system of conveyances designed and used for collecting stormwater, which includes roads with drainage systems, municipal streets, catch basins, curbs, gutters, ditches, man-made channels, and storm drains that are owned or operated by a government unit having jurisdiction under Section 208 of the Clean Water Act that discharges waters, uh, discharges to waters of the United States. Some additional background, um, in, the city of Wilmer was designated a MS four due to its population being greater than 10,000. Um, the original stormwater pollution prevention plan was developed in 2007 as part of our permit, initial permit application for the MS four permit. We received approval of the SWIP in September of 2008, and we received permit coverage, coverage in September 30th of 2008. Uh, the coverage that we received in 2008 was good through May 31st of 2011. Currently, we do not have a new permit because the new permit has not been issued by the MPCA yet. There, the new reissuance of the general permit is currently open for public comment through July 23rd of 2012. Even though the general permit has expired, we are currently operating under that permit. The permit was first placed on public notice in May, public notice, May 31st to July 15th of 2011. Uh, the PCA, the MPCA received multiple comments to extend the public comment period on the draft permit and extended the public notice comment period to, uh, from August 8th to August 29th of 2011. During that time, the MPCA then received thirty-five comment letters and, uh, two, two contested hearing cases on the draft permit. They then proceeded to hold stakeholder meetings, um, from the months of December of 2011 to March 2012 to discuss the proposed concepts for the revision of the permit, and those, uh, proposed concepts were based on the comments that they had received. A new public notice period was then issued, and that goes, like I said, through July 23rd of 2012. The effective date of the new permit has not been identified, but it is proposed to be sometime in September or October of 2012, and then it would expire in 2017. What is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program? The city developed the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program back in 2007 and 2008 to address the six minimum control measures set by the MPCA. These include public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site runoff controls, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping. The goal of the SWIP is to create best management practices which will reduce or eliminate sediment and other pollutants from our lakes, rivers, and streams, wetlands. Some of the MS four accomplishments from 2011 are that we inspected and inventory our ponds and wetlands. This is a requirement of the permit. So far, we have inspected 130 of our 151 ponds. Uh, the definition of the ponds is changing with the new permit, so the next year, you may see that total number of ponds going down based on the definition provided by the MPCA. Um, they sometimes categorize wetlands versus ponds, or ditches versus ponds, and things like that, so you may see that number decrease. It's not because we're filling in ponds. Um, we also can, continue to conduct erosion and sediment control site inspections, um, on a, a time permitting basis and as needed basis. Um, primarily, we do this on the larger construction projects, and we hope to increase those with our home, um, home sites. We swept 5,087.5 cubic yards of material. To put this in perspective, that would be, cover a football field of approximately three foot deep. We also inspected 116 outfalls. This is also a requirement of our permit as we are, are, um, to inspect 20 percent of all of our outfalls every year so that we get all of them inspected on a five-year rotation. Uh, this is a little bit more aggressive than the 20 percent. As you know, we also did some, um, improvements. We removed sediment from the Orton Blad Pond. Uh, we did the storm sewer realignment in Pheasant Run. We constructed the Ella Avenue Rain Garden to catch some of the sediment coming out of that, um, outfall and going across into the lake. We did the Pleasant View Ditch Cleaning, and we continued work on the watershed management Again, we continued our construction site inspections in 2012. We plan to update the webpage along with the, the new, um, upgraded webpage that will be coming out shortly. Uh, we will plan to revise our stormwater ordinance, perhaps to be a little more stringent, um, as we've talked about in the past, with the smaller developments. We will, uh, continue to educate city staff, developers, contractors, homeowners, and the public on the importance of stormwater and stormwater quality. Also, we plan to develop an illicit discharge ordinance. Um, this is proposed to be planned, to be, um, sometime before September, before the reissuance of the new permit, um, and to hopefully adopt the watershed management plan that was prepared by fire engineering. Uh, complete the pond inventory, uh, create some additional stormwater articles. Uh, there will be some revisions required of our stormwater pollution prevention plan due to the new permit requirements, and then, of course, we would have to apply for the new permit coverage under the new permit. Uh, the new permit shifts the focus on the program permit development to measuring the program implementation through tracking our accomplishments, improving stormwater management, demonstrating progress on our goals, and focusing on best management practice, effectiveness, selection, and improving efficiency. As in the past, uh, the annual report is due to the MPCA by the end of the month. Um, we will include any comments that we receive this evening, and, uh, we would notify, based on those comments, if there are any changes required for our permit this go-around, we would do so and notify the MPCA of those changes. Also, I will be, uh, inputting the number of attendees at tonight's meeting. With that, that concludes my presentation, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Does anyone care to comment from the, uh, audience, from the people that are here? Hearing ended, we will close the public hearing. Thank you. Uh, open it up for discussion. Alex, Council, Councilman Christianson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Holly. Uh, just a couple of questions. The, uh, uh, can I assume that the permit requirement is started in 2007, then? Is that?
Correct.
How old it is, is it?
Yes.
Is that nationwide, or is that just Minnesota?
Um, I believe that's Minnesota. It's through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and it's a five-year permit. So it's issued under a general permit, but every city that's designated as MS four needs to apply for that.
So, every city has to apply for it? I mean, all the small towns?
No. Those that are designated an MS four, which would be, they would be greater than 10,000 in population.
Okay, so the smaller cities then are allowed to, uh, put whatever they want into the ditches and let it run?
At this time, yes.
Doesn't make sense.
I agree.
Uh, that's just, um, why was it required in the first place, do you know? I, I-
It was part of the, uh, Clean Water Act and regulated through the EPA.
So that was federal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, uh, do we have any idea what the cost of the city is for this MS four permit, for time and money? I mean, what, how much time is spent on something like?
I have not figured out the cost associated with that. We just roll it into our daily tasks as we do our other tasks throughout the day, so I have not costed it out.
And then how long is this one for, again, you said?
It'll be five years, through 2017.
Okay, so it's a five-year thing?
Once it finally gets issued, mm-hmm.
Is there a fee? Do we have to pay them some money?
Yeah, it's about $400.
Okay, so it isn't endless. Um, and if it's not applied for, do we get fined?
Yes.
We do.
And we also do get audited. We could get audited, too, to make sure that we're in compliance with the permit.
Does somebody come out and check? I mean, our discharge?
Yes.
Somebody from MPCA?
At times, there have been where the MPCA has come out and, for example, in the past, I'll use the new airport site, for example. If, if proper silt fence isn't installed correctly, or catch basins aren't being protected with, uh, um, some kind of, I've lost my terminology, but some kind of protection to prevent sediment from going down in there, we, we would get a letter of intent or a letter of warning to correct those actions. Um, if we don't seed our boulevards, or put blanket down, if, um, a project is done and it needs to be done within 14 days, um, we could get a letter of warning. We have not been fined yet, um, but we have received letters of warning, and then we made the corrective action to do that, and-
So basically, that permit covers anything that, anywhere where water's gonna run off?
Pretty much, yes.
Potentially run off, I should say. Not necessarily going to, because I see silt fences going up, um, you know, in places where I don't think they should be, and they spend all this money. And I mean, uh, road construction, you see them, and I wonder, why, why are they doing it? There's 16-inch grass all the way around it.
Partially, they're doing it to make sure that they don't get fined, being a little bit overprotective. Um, not needed in all areas. You know, it's only to protect runoff that would go, you know, downhill from the site into our stormwater system, but a lot of people do tend to overuse silt fence.
Yeah. And then one last question. I, I notice, uh, there's an item here that says, uh, accomplishments planned for 2012. It says, "Develop illicit discharge ordinance."
Correct.
And what, that would be a city ordinance?
Yes. You'll, you'll see that coming through council in the next couple of months, and that would really, like, pouring paint down the storm drains, or putting grease down the storm drains, or, or things like that. So we would have to have a reporting type of mechanism for people to report if they see those types of things, and then we would have to have something to follow up and have some teeth into making sure that those things are being corrected.
So will that have a, uh, fine attached to it, or a misdemeanor, or-
It could. Typically, in order to, to have something that's gonna be enforced, you know, it usually is a little bit more enforceable, or gets more attention if you have a fee associated with it. Um, you know, many cities have them, so I would, I propose to look at some of the examples from other, the city, other cities, and use fire engineering as, as a resource as well to develop a, an ordinance that is, um, that works for everybody.
So that'll also, uh, I mean, restaurants will have to comply. I mean, I, I know-
Yes.
-that, uh, city workers have found grease balls, they call them.
And, and the grease, the grease for the restaurants is covered under our, um, fogs, oils, and greases ordinance through the, um, sanitary, or through the wastewater treatment plant ordinance, but this would be things like if you see people putting garbage or dumping paint down the storm sewers specifically.
Okay. Thank you again.
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report, Holly.
Sure.
Uh, do we have any idea of, uh, who some of our offenders are within the city, and do we pay special attention to them in one way or another?
We do. I will not divulge those, um, people at, at the public meeting, but we do know who to watch, and the PCA knows who to watch as well, so.
And homeowners, it's, uh, grease and those sort of things that are, does that not apply on, on this particular part of the program?
Part of the stormwater awareness piece and the public education piece for, um, homeowners would be, for example, not washing your car in your driveway, washing your car in the street so the soap doesn't, or washing your car on the grass so the soap doesn't go directly down into this, into the storm sewer system. Not putting your grass clippings into the street so that they get washed into the storm sewer system. So those things do apply to the homeowners. And that's the education piece that needs to, needs to be, um, be more prevalent on our webpage and on, on some of the flyers and things that we do send out.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to comment. It seems a little odd to me that the MPCA couldn't get this ready to go. They knew it was gonna expire in 2011, and here we are in 2012. But anyway, do you have any inclination or, or knowledge, are, is anything gonna tighten up with, with the new proposed rules? Are you gonna have any difficulties?
There will be some difficulties as far as, um, perhaps mapping some of our, um, ponds and calculating the amount of water that they hold and the amount of water sediment that's in those ponds. Some of those requirements are gonna be tightened up. The, and part of the reason that the permit hasn't been reissued is because some of the original requirements in the, in the initial proposal of the permit were very stringent, and so that's why they received a lot of comment letters. Um, one of the biggest comment letters came from the, um, Minnesota City Stormwater Coalition, which the city of Wilmer is a member of, and they had pages and pages of comments as far as, um, implementation and the costs that are involved with implementing the new permit. So there will be some costs associated, yes.
Thank you.
Further questions? Comments? Holly, I have one question, if I may. What do you look for, or what do your people look for when you're inspecting something? Let's just say the ponds.
We look for, um, and we're looking in ponds, we're looking for sediment buildup, we're looking for, um, garbage, um, looking for, uh, the biggest thing that we look for is the silt fence being up when people are building things. Um, the tracking of construction vehicles onto streets is a big thing. You know, if they don't have a rock construction entrance, that's a big violation, and we require them to put in the rock construction entrance to kind of get all the sediment and dirt off of that. So there's a variety of things, but those are the key things that we would look for.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
This time, we'll, uh, move right into the, uh, Finance Committee Report for June 11th. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda had to do with airport crack sealing. Um, city planner and airport manager Megan Sauer explained to us that there are cracks in the runway at the airport that need to be addressed. Uh, the 2012 Airport Capital Outlay Program has $9,000, uh, designated for crack seal improvements, and $50,000 to seed and sod, uh, the cross runway. It's being proposed that $5,000 of that $50,000 runway funds be re-designated to cover additional costs of a professional services contract to provide design, bidding, and construction services to crack seal that runway. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution amending the 2012 Airport Capital Outlay Budget by re-appropriating $5,000 from the seeding/sodding project to the crack seal improvements project for professional services contract to provide design, bidding, and construction services.
Second.
A motion has been made in second to introduce the resolution amending the 2012 Airport Capital Outlay Budget by re-appropriating $5,000 from the seeding/sodding project to the crack seal improvements project for a professional services contract to provide design, bidding, and construction services. Councilman Ammon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, reading here, the professional services contract to provide design, bidding, and construction services, crack to crack seal runway. Why would, are we paying another firm to design specifications on how to crack seal their runway? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Why?
We don't have that expertise. I mean, runways and, are different than, than streets and roads.
I might add, we had that same, uh, question-
Question.
-at, at the committee meeting, and it was answered, um, in that manner.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tarkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Uh, in that same sort of discussion, staff was recommending then that the city of Wilmer enter into a professional services agreement with Bolton and Mink to design bid and provide construction services for the runway crack seal improvements project at the airport for $13,442. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to enter into a professional services contract in the amount of $13,442 with Bolton and Mink to provide design, bidding, and construction services for the runway crack seal improvements project.
Second.
A motion has been made in second to introduce the resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to enter into professional services contract in the amount of $13,442 with Bolton and Mink to provide design, bidding, and construction services for the runway crack seal improvements project. I have a, a question. Um, if I, am I reading this right, that it costs more to provide the design bidding as construction than it does to do the actual construction?
No, that is not correct. Um, we have allocated nine, we already had 9,000 in the city's budget to do the project. We're asking for another 5,000 to, to cover the additional cost.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I think that same confusion also occurred at the Finance Committee, so you're not alone. We could've written that more clearly.
Roll call. Uh, is there another question here?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess I'm curious, what goes into designing crack ceiling? I, I mean, to pay somebody $13,000 to design crack ceiling? I, I don't understand it. I guess I should've come to committee and asked, but I, I, there's, there's a lot of CS in there, common sense.
Well, we, we did, at the committee meeting, we did have, uh, Bolton and Mink, um, person there, and he talked to us about it a little bit, and it's not as easy as it sounds. That's kind of the summary of what I got out of it. It, you know, these, these are fairly, fairly deep, and they have to be able to withstand, um-
The impact of, of air, of aircraft taking on and off of them. So it's a different, it, it is different than designing roads and streets. It's a different expertise.
Further discussion? Comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tarkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
The second item is a couple of donations to our fire department. Uh, staff informed us that the fire department has received two donations as a result of the I-III at MTC Conference in, on April 14th, uh, of this year. ACGC Schools donated $75, and Midwest Technology Campus donated $812.15. It's being recommended that both donations be accepted and that the fire department's 2012 operating budget be adjusted accordingly. Uh, and we'll have two resolutions to deal with here. Following some discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution accepting the donation of $75, amending the budget accordingly and sending a letter of appreciation to ACGC Schools.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to introduce the resolution accepting the donation of $75, amending the budget accordingly and sending a letter of appreciation to ACGC Schools. Discussion? Councilman Christianson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, um, uh, what I-III at MTC means.
Chief Calvin.
Councilmember Christianson, that was the project that was done out at Midwest Technology Campus where they talked about the new things that are coming into the area of technology. Um, the firefighters went out there and assisted them with their project, and, uh, this was a donation back to the city for those services.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tarkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christians.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Um, we also had another donation, the one from, uh, uh, Midwest Technology Campus. There was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution accepting the donation of $812.15, amending the budget accordingly, and sending a letter of appreciation to Midwest Technology Campus.
Second.
A motion has been made in second to introduce the resolution accepting the donation of $812.15, amending the budget accordingly, and sending a letter of appreciation to Midwest Technology Campus. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Tarkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Uh, next item was, uh, deferred assessment ordinance. Uh, Clerk Halliday explained to us that for many years, the city has offered deferred Clerk Halliday explained to us that for many years, the city has offered deferred assessments to qualifying senior citizens and disabled homeowners. Our city attorney is recommending that this option to allow deferment be adopted in ordinance form instead of as policy, which we're doing now. A draft of the proposed ordinance was presented for us to review. Staff raised some concerns about Section 589B, which describes gross household income levels at or under established HUD low-income limits. We also felt these limits were too high and that the very low or extremely low limits should be instituted instead. So, staff is going to continue to research that, and we'll bring back something else for the committee to review. So, that was for information only. The next item was the beginning of our budget presentations, and I might add, these are budgets that are put together by the department directors. They are not the final thing that the mayor will be proposing. This is strictly what the department directors have proposed. We started out with Planning and Development Director Peterson, and he presented an overview of his department's revenues and expenditures. Revenues continued to lag due to a downturn in construction activity and out-of-date fee schedules for construction permit fees, zoning fees, and rental licensing fees. Historical changes to these schedules and comparisons to other regional centers were discussed. It was being recommended that an increase of 15% be instituted for building permits, mechanical permits, and plumbing permits. Increases to plan review fees, zoning fees, and rental registration fees were also proposed. The committee requested additional information and discussion at a future Finance Committee meeting regarding the proposed fees. Major changes in expenditures for his department included an increase in fuel costs, a reduction in staff, continuing education and certification maintenance, and an increase in professional design and consulting services for downtown and miscellaneous development projects. That was followed by Administrator Stevens. She reviewed the administrator's budget with us. The only change for 2012 was the reallocation of the administrative assistance salary and benefits entirely to the city administrator's department. Under the 2013 budget, 25% had been included under elections. However, these duties have now been absorbed by the city clerk's office. The mayor and council 2013 budget has been reduced by $5,000 in professional services, which was for council retreats and planning sessions, and $1,000 for travel costs. The legal department 2013 budget now reflects labor negotiating attorney's fees of $20,000, which had been allocated under non-departmental in the past years. The data processing 2013 budget shows computer replacements as small tools and equipment rather than capital outlay, and that is per the council policy change on fixed assets. Our final report was from Finance Director Okens, and he reviewed the finance department's 2013 budget, noting that there were no major changes. Personnel costs increased due to contract obligations. This was all for information, and these discussions will continue for the next several meetings to talk about the budgets. The next item on our report, on our agenda, were some reports. We received the reports from May Local Option Sales Tax, May CVB Financial, May RAC-8 Financial, March Rice Trust, and the first quarter Rice Trust. We had one item under miscellaneous, and that was an update from Councilmember Fagerly, told us that the Candy High Area Transit will be requesting $13,000 from the city for 2013. That was for information only. That concluded the business of the committee. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
That's one, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about, pardon?
Need a second. Did you make a motion?
I said a second.
Okay. And then we have a motion in a second, and then we're open.
Questions?
Discussion. Okay, now you can talk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go back to item number four, and Dennis, I understand this is very early, really early. But I still want to, for the public's benefit, to understand that these three agencies, their requests total $47,000 in increases. Again, I want to remember, I want you to remember what I said when I attended the January of this year League of Minnesota Cities. And at that meeting, they said, if current revenues, and I've used the term uncertain times, and we definitely live in uncertain times, if current revenue and spending trends continue and no policy changes are made, and that's the business of this council, we are the policy people, Minnesota cities of all sizes in all regions of the state will be broke by 2015. Okay? That is the startling findings of a recently completed projection prepared by the league by the Hubert H. Humphrey Institute and the University of Minnesota, not two small potatoes, but some pretty bright people. And it was released June 24th, and this is 2010. We're now in 2012. According to this projection also, that cities overall would see a deficit of 35% of revenues by 2025. So, we have some work ahead of us, and again, we need to be very careful on how we spend our money in the upcoming years.
I'd like to make a comment to Councilman Tarkin, if I may, and tag on to what Councilman Anderson said, is the fact that this is very early in the process, that there will be some changes made. We talk about this on a regular basis, and I would not get too excited about what you see so far.
I would also just like to clarify, those are not, those increases in budgets are a shift from one budget to another. So, the reallocation of the administrative assistance salary, that salary is currently budgeted 25% in the elections, is shifting to the city administrator's budget to reflect where the actual work is performed. And the same thing with the legal services. The overall budget for legal services has not increased.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not attend the meeting, but I did read through the packet here, and it just appears to me that the increase in any future increases from other departments is mostly due to salaries and pay and benefit increases. I go to Mr. Peterson's report, where he wants to raise the building permit fees, and many times, we hear the comment that compared to other regional centers, or compared to such and such a city, you know, we're lagging behind. Well, I think we should turn that around and say, let's let them compare themselves to us. Let's have the least expensive building permits. Let's welcome people here. And in that same vein, we need to seriously look at combining the city, the county, and these townships or cities like New London and Atwater that have, they hire another building inspector. Let's combine them and have one-stop shopping in the Candy High County. It's going to make it a lot less expensive for these permits. I realize revenues have been lagging behind. That's because building is way, way down. I mean, and so, do you penalize them by raising the fee to build a home? You know, you're telling somebody, it costs less to go in the county than it does in the city. You know, so we tell them, people, you know, go outside the city. I mean, we should be welcoming, welcoming new home construction with lesser fees, and we be the shining city on the hill that everybody tries to emulate or imitate. I don't think raising fees is the proper thing to do. I don't ever think that. I think they need to be lowered, and offices need to be made to work more efficient. And I know that the New London Building Inspector, they cut his hours, I believe, to 32 recently because of the slowdown in construction. And here we are, helping the county. We're fortunate that we can help them for four, eight hours a week, whatever it is. That means that there's four, eight hours a week that we aren't doing city work. So, let's, let's make it a goal to look at combining these services for, in this next year. We need to decrease fees, taxes, and keep people interested in Willmar. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Further discussion? Councilman Ahn.
I'd like to just briefly comment, and this is the opportunity to bring up on the rental licensing fees that we have established in the city. I understand that it's time-consuming, and it's a service we do for the protection of the people that rent the apartments. When this was originally initiated back in, like, 1988, when we worked on it, I know it was very controversial. At that time, the yearly schedule to re-inspect the properties was established. And from my understanding, at that time, I said, let's review this to see if we can, after we go through the formal process of inventorying our rental property and making the appropriate safety measures, that we can maybe reduce the inspection times to be less, not as frequent as they are now. Because most of the landlords are staying compliant, and there are some that are not. And I happily up in East Grand Forks, which is my hometown, talking to the city clerk up there. And then what they do is, they have the ability, the fire marshal and building inspector have the ability to defer or postpone it another year for inspection. If the property has been, A, you know, well-maintained, and it's no complaints, and they have very few code compliance, or very minimal violations of any sort, that they will extend that for another year. I'm just wondering if maybe we shouldn't do that, which would probably free up some more time for our inspectors to do other work. And I know it takes a considerable amount of time, but I, I think this is the opportunity to bring it up, so I've been patiently waiting. And since this being addressed, I think that maybe we should consider that, or the appropriate committee could review that, with staff too, to see if that would be, if that would be appropriate. Just a comment.
We can certainly look into that. Councilman Ahn.
Thank you.
Okay, acting on the motion that was on the table, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Community Development Committee report for June 14th. Councilman Tarkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had no comments from the public. Item number two was a motion, or is a motion, terminable leasing agreement. Staff presented the request by the Willmar 10 for a terminable leasing agreement to use a portion of the right-of-way at 19th Avenue and First Street Southwest for parking for the new goodwill facility. The city had previously been approached about use of the right-of-way and had expressed a preference to not vacate the right-of-way due to the presence of utilities and storm sewer. Chair Tarkin called on members of the American Legion post to present a list of concerns regarding the Goodwill Project that's attached to this report. The Legion representatives said that they met with a representative of Willmar 10 to discuss the project, and a number of their concerns were addressed at that meeting. The committee discussed the balance of the concerns by the American Legion. The current concerns seem to have been or are being addressed. The committee discussed the terminable licensing agreement request. It was noted that the agreement is a condition of the plan review conducted by the Planning Commission. Staff stated that the Planning Commission's recommendations included the stipulation that no structures be built within the right-of-way. It was noted that the licensing agreement will require insurance and will also require the other party to be responsible for any damage to the utilities or for any repairs should it be necessary to access any of the utilities underneath the parking. And following a motion, the recommendation was to approve a terminable licensing agreement for the parking in the right-of-way and to authorize the mayor and administrator to execute the agreement.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve a terminable licensing agreement for parking in the right-of-way and to authorize the mayor and the administrator to execute the agreement. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
And then, Mr. Mayor, if I could, on that same subject, I want to enumerate what some of the concerns were of the Legion. And number one was location of a loading dock dumpster back access in relation to the American Legion front entrance. And that will be taken care of in further discussions with the Willmar 10. Number two, truck's ability to access loading dock without protruding into shared easement. Number three was trucks idling engines during cold weather creating noise and exhaust fumes to enter the building. Number four, maintenance snow removal of shared easement. Number five was a privacy fence to improve the aesthetic appeal for the American Legion's front entrance. And number six, truck access to loading dock from First Street or 19th Avenue. And again, I think that they can work all of those out with the, with the Willmar 10. Item number three is development financing policies, and this was a request by the committee member Steve Ahn. Staff presented the committee briefly, committee briefly reviewed the current development financing policy. The committee discussed the need for a policy to specifically address tax abatement and to have policies that allow them quicker access to more information about the project and the developer. Staff proposed adding a tax abatement policy to the city's policy package and to make sure that it is, that it is included, that it includes language to verify the financial capabilities of the developer and to link the term of the tax abatement to the level of benefit that the project creates for the community. Staff will, staff will use state statutes as a guide. Additionally, all developmental finance policies will be reviewed and updated to ensure that they are consistent with current statutes. And I'm not sure if any of the committee members have comments on this or not. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the committee?
Okay. Item number four was garbage can storage, again, for information only. The committee discussed the ongoing abuse of curbside pickup relative to long-term storage of garbage cans. Several suggestions were given to try to address the matter. Those included discussing the issue on open mic and requesting compliance, having staff provide a handout to offenders, and asking the haulers to put a reminder on their statements. Item number five, the Goodwill Project conditions, for information only. Staff briefly reviewed the conditions placed on Goodwill Project by the Planning Commission. There being no further business, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we take these minutes and file them tonight.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development meeting of June 14th, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of the resolution appointment election judges for primary election. Kevin, would you like to explain that to us, please?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, pursuant to Minnesota statutes 204B, municipal governments need to adopt resolutions appointing judges at each election. And the primary election is being held Tuesday, August 14th. And we have coerced some people into spending 13 hours of their day working the various precincts, and some to step forward and be a head judge. And they are there before you as listed. Training begins, I think it's on August 1st by the county. And pursuant to that law, we'd like to see the county... we'd like to see the council adopt the resolution appointing these individuals in their various precincts.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve that the individuals listed below be appointed as judges to work at the primary election in the city of Wilmer on Tuesday, August fourteenth, 2012. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Yeah, just a question. Kevin, are we receiving any new people, or I, I see the same names, you know, every two years? Are any new people stepping forward and filling in the election judge spots?
There's more new names on here than we have. I bet you we're at about twenty percent new names.
That's good. That's good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. The announcement of the council committee meeting dates, Councilman Reese?
Public Works Public Safety, June twenty-sixth, Tuesday, four forty-five.
Councilman Ammon.
We have a meeting coming up in July, and we're not sure of the date yet.
We're working on two possible dates. We will confirm that for our next one, for labor relations.
Did you call him? Finance committee will meet on Monday, June twenty-fifth, at four forty-five.
June twenty-fifth, Councilman Doc?
With my Community Development on the twenty-eighth, four forty-five. Conference room number one.
Thank you. Under the
Excuse me, sorry.
Under miscellaneous, Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a comment. I want to thank you publicly for seeing, too, that some flowers were put in the pots downtown Wilmer the last couple of days. Fresh flowers always remind me of life, and I'm saddened that we didn't have flowers in all the pots downtown, and I have a suggestion for next year to make sure we have flowers. One would be to, I understand there's about sixty-plus businesses downtown, and if I'm not mistaken, the first year they did this, it was like six thousand dollars. So, if they each gave a hundred dollars, that would cover the cost of the plants and watering them. The second suggestion would be to, if that doesn't happen, reduce the design center's funding by the amount that it takes to put the flowers in it, because that's typically where the money comes from, from us, and then have the, the mayor or the council see to that gets done. Again, I, I think timing is good. We have Wilmer Fest coming up this weekend, and many new faces, people from out of town come here, and we need to look like there's life, not just on the streets, but in the flower pots also, as does New London and Hutchinson and Spicer. I don't know how they fund theirs, but it really makes the downtown come alive in those areas, and that's my comment. Thank you again.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any further miscellaneous? Move to adjourn?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.